Do yoga, AKA man strength. Pudly just to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. Mr. Micholi's here. Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Huff.
Yes.
Mrs. Pittman.
Here. Yeah.
You're not going to present your exhibits?
Mr. Becker?
I don't think so.
Everybody good?
Yep.
You good, Danny?
Good.
Page two, energy.
Review and approval of the November sixteenth, twenty seventeen, regular meeting minutes of the Board of Education.
So moved. Motion by Mr. Huff, second by Mr. Jones. Mr. Micholi?
Yes.
Mr. Jones? Mr. Huff?
Yes.
Pittman?
Yes.
Mrs. Cantania?
Yes.
We have presentations tonight. Real quick, I would like to thank Mrs. Cantania. This is her last board meeting, so appreciate everything you've done. You've accomplished quite a bit in your four years, so
Thank you.
I would like to present you with this.
You didn't have to do that, but thank you very much.
But, uh, thank you.
I appreciate that, thank you.
It's a lot more, I think, when you get on to it than expected.
It is, it's more than you realize.
More time-consuming, I think, than you originally think, so appreciate everything you've done.
Thank you.
And we have a special presentation tonight. We have our first robotics competition that we entered last Saturday, so we're kind of excited about that. Kind of ties into the whole Fishbowl, so, uh, Mr. Moore, I'd kind of turn it over to you.
Yeah, uh, so, um, back in front of you guys again, always like coming to talk to you guys. Um, if you don't know anything about First Robotics, it was generated about almost fifteen to twenty-some years ago. We're, us in Austintown are the only local schools that actually compete in this size robot. Some of the other high schools like Gerard, Warren Harding, compete in the bigger ones that are more expensive. This is sort of the mid-grade, and then, um, there are some other local schools that do the robotics league, so we're potentially venturing, um, potentially in that in the coming years. So, uh, what this is, is, um, they have to build a robot that is coded, um, they can use any parts they want. We bought a kit, um, through a grant that we got through being a rookie team for this year, through First. We got seven hundred and fifty dollars, um, towards the purchase of the kit and the robot, and then the school covered, I think, about five hundred dollars, um, for the initial year, to cover the cost of going to one competition, um, and, uh, the remaining of the robot parts. So roughly, um, about fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars is the average budget to sort of run this program. And so what they had to do is they had to build a robot that had to fit into an eighteen-by-eighteen-inch cube, um, in the beginning, and then they had to program it for autonomous movement for thirty seconds. This year, game was called the Relic Recovery. They had what these call these glyphs, they had them stationed in the center of a twelve-by-twelve playing surface, and then you started your robot on what was called a balance stone. So it was a three-quarter inch platform that was raised about an inch off the ground, and you had to maneuver your robot off the platform successfully and either stack a glyph, that's what these were called, into a rack, or do something else autonomously for thirty seconds, and you scored points. And if you got your robot back up at the, um, on the balance stone, you scored more points. And then you had a two-minute, um, what's called a teleop, where the students through an Xbox or three-sixty controller were able to control the robot to do whatever they wanted to do it. And you scored points by stacking blocks, um, putting a relic outside of the playing area, um, and actually getting back up on the, the balance stone. And then you play the competition, um, four teams go at a time, there's a blue side and red side, so you're actually paired up with another team, and so you kind of talk, like, hey, this is what our robot can do, and this is what your robot can do. And so there's teamwork among playing it. The first couple of matches, being rookie, were a little rough. Thank God we had good alliance members, they helped us out. Uh, we had, um, sort of a, a brain epiphany or brainstorm idea came, that we needed to make some changes to the robot at lunchtime, and we made some changes, and we were able to, uh, the next match, um, it was a low-scoring match, out of the fifty points, we scored like forty-six of them by ourselves. So we were able to make some good changes, um, and the kids did a wonderful job being sort of the first experience for me and them, um, and hopefully we're going to continue this on in the future. I've actually started today to get in contact with, um, outside, uh, community businesses that actually start sponsoring the program. And so hopefully I can come back and, and hopefully in January or a little bit later and say that we have, uh, nice donations on behalf of some community. So I'm going to turn it over to, uh, we actually had, um, six students, um, three of them couldn't be here, two of them were at basketball practice, and I don't know where they dropped. So what was Aaron English, Garrett Bueno, and Josh Dameski. Two of them are, um, seventh graders, and then Josh is, uh, in ninth grade, so we're kind of very young. Some of the other teams we were actually competing against were, uh, juniors and seniors.
That's crazy.
And so, yeah, so, yeah. So this program runs from seven to twelve, and that's the reason why I picked it, is because it actually covers this entire building, so we can get everybody, um, our juniors and seniors didn't want to partake, I guess. So I'm going to turn it over to the three that are here, so they can actually introduce themselves and get some practice, so they have to, um, part of it is they need to keep a notebook, and then they go in front of a panel of judges and get interviewed, um, so teaches them a lot of real-world skills that they're just not getting, you know, just in a typical classroom. So I'm going to turn it over to them. So which one of you is going to go first?
That.
I gotta, I gotta
I know what has to be.
Babysitter's Rock, let's go!
We'll go with the freshman first.
So, obviously, my name is Garrett Cantania, if you didn't already know. I was, uh, the programmer for this, uh, these two were kind of the builders, and, uh, my main job was to program both the autonomous and the actual controller mode. They were obviously a great help, even if they didn't help me program, because, uh, anytime I needed help testing something or fixing, uh, they were always there. I actually think we did quite well for our first year. We placed pretty high out of the twenty-four teams that went, and I believe only one other team was considered a rookie team. Our autonomous didn't actually work as intended, so we had to stay on the balance board and gain points through that, uh, because we didn't want to lose points from hitting someone.
So it's a little bit of a strategy, you know? So we actually got points for starting there, and not moving, and ending there, so it's, so strategy, it's like, hey, we go to strategy. We saw the teams doing it, so we joined them. All right, sorry.
Uh, as for the solo program, I have to say that that actually went extremely well. That's how we scored most of our points. We would have one driver that controlled the, all the wheels, and we had one driver that controlled the arm as well as the claws. Uh, the claws are just controlled by two servos, and as for everything else, it's controlled by, uh, DC motors. So it did take a lot of coordination, but, uh, we had a coach there to help communicate between the two players, because it can be give stressful, and, uh, that coach did actually help quite a bit in relaying the information that one was trying to say to the others. That's all I can think of right now, so I'll pass it over to Ryan.
I'm Ryan Higgins, and I was one of the builders, and I was happy to join the club, and I really did enjoy it. I liked the team members, they were really kind, and made me learn an experience on how to build a robot, and what to do in a contest, and what not to do. And I had fun competing against other teams. The other teams were very nice, and like Moore said, thank goodness we had them at the beginning of the game. And...
Uh, I'm Camilla Blackman. Same things are in said, I am a builder. I was, uh, one of the few people who came the first few days, so, yeah.
So she can say she's one of the founding team members.
Yeah, I'm one of the founding team members. The members were very nice, um, we were always able to work around if people had, um, games, uh, things they had to do, otherwise studying. The building wasn't the hardest part, I believe the hardest part was the autonomous that didn't work correct.
Can somebody, what is the autonomous again?
Okay, so, so the autonomous is, in the very beginning of the competition, um, you had to program, um, we can do a short, we can test a short, we have no idea what's going to happen. Uh, what it is, is that, um, so in the beginning of the competition, you have to, um, how it's controlled is actually via two cellphones, um, through direct Wi-Fi, um, and so every team has their own, um, unique cellphone, um, that was part of the kit. And so the autonomous is, uh, you load it, um, they have a little desk, you go there and they tell you, okay, autonomous game's starting in three, two, one, you initialize, and you stand back, and the robot has to do something. And then it counts down to thirty seconds, and then you have the ability, then they say, okay, um, going in teleop in eight seconds, so they give you eight seconds to get it autonomous, and put it back into driver mode, and then for the next two minutes, the kids control the robot. And so, um, let me mention the idea of the coach, um, it was their teammate member, it wasn't me, I was there at the first competition, they kind of helped them, um, but we had two drivers, and one of the other kids was actual coach there. So I kind of just stayed back and sort of enjoyed, sort of watching them compete. All right, so are you going to attempt an autonomous? Okay, so we'll give you an idea what autonomous is.
Uh, so this is a program that we had set up for, uh, the left side of the blue, and, I think what it was supposed to do was, uh, take that block that we had preloaded and drop it into the box to hopefully score some points, and let's see if this works. Okay, so to grab it and
I have a video of that from here.
Right, right. So, uh, so it was, uh, you kind of let go of the block, so that's the idea, is to get off the balance stone and then just sort of turn, and so, um...
Can you show it again?
Yeah.
You missed your photo op.
Yeah, I missed the photo op. And the reason, and one of the reasons why we, um, sort of did run our, um, autonomous mode is that a lot of, a lot of teams, and First Rookie and some other teams, the robot had to maintain the, uh, initial eighteen inches until the actual start, so our arm was raised above the eighteen point, and so we'd have to go back real quick and change the code, so we just said, it's not really worth it, to score points staying here like some other teams did, we just sort of stayed with that. So going forward, uh, we are on a waiting list, um, for one other competition that will happen in February at Kent State. All the local, um, Austintown was, um, lucky enough to have a spot. We were able to get, um, another competition, um, at Cleveland State on January fifth. We opted not to go to that one because it was a little too quick, um, and then having the kids come over during Christmas break was just a little much. If we got everything worked out before we went to Austintown, we probably would have been going to that one, um, so we're hoping to get on, um, the list for the one at, um, Penn State.
How long of a day was this, Steve?
Um, we actually, it was, uh, we had to check in Friday, so we actually went Friday night. They had some, um, problems getting, um, set up there, so we had to be there roughly five-thirty, they were supposed to start inspecting the robot, um, you had to have stickers, which we didn't have, and some other stuff, had to make sure it fit eighteen-inch box, so we were there from five-thirty till almost like eight-thirty, I think, we left, um, and then we were back there, um, so we had a few more things we had to change. In the morning, we got there at seven, and I think we finished up, um, we didn't make it to the final round, uh, was at three-thirty we left, um, the final round, um, did not finish till almost five, so it's, it's basically
Did the parents get to stay?
Yeah, the parents got to stay, um, they stayed watched, um, some parents actually provided some lunch for the kids, um, I tried to keep them, I had conversations with them, and the bleachers were me, uh, we weren't playing, trying to keep them updated, um, we actually, out of twenty-four teams, we actually finished eleventh ranked overall in terms of the points. Uh, we end, uh, when our matches had six qualifying points, so we ended up, um, so at the end, they pick the top four teams, and the top four teams can go then and pick another, two other teams to work with them, be part of their alliance to go to the finals, um, so we were eligible to make it as one of the chosen alliance teams. But since our autonomous didn't quite work, I can see why we weren't, weren't chosen, but, but we ended up eleventh ranked, eleventh out of, um, and I did not check, um, the scoring, but they have it actually how many points your robot actually scored, and then, like I said, out of that one match, out of the fifty, uh, points that were actually scored, we scored forty-six, and won by ourselves. So we, and we helped, uh, and it was right after lunch, we, um, we added some, um, more wheels to our robot to actually help us get back on the balance stone, we were kind of struggling to get there, and, um, it's right after we did it, we had that first match, and we kind of found our groove, and then from there on, and the rest of the afternoon, we did really well.
I think that's just fantastic. I mean, you kids, all had fun?
Good.
It seemed like it, I know when I was talking to you guys, and before you even went that day, and you were showing me that, it was great, so...
Yeah, it was, it, it was, um, a very kind of stressful day, uh, but, you know, looking around and watching, um, out of the twenty-four teams, I mean, there was robots, um, give you an idea of price range, uh, maybe the parts on this, we'll say this is like maybe a five-hundred-dollar robot, um, from all the parts that we used out of what we had, maybe a little bit more, um, the one that actually ended up winning the competition and actually setting a world record for the points, so this is a worldwide competition, was a five-thousand-dollar robot. Just to build the robot, that doesn't include, their budget for the year is about eight-thousand, they go to all these different competitions and stuff like that. So basically for what we did, um, actually we had a couple other teams come over, and like they were experienced teams, and asked, well, you know, for as a rookie team, what do you say? And the one team, it was kind of funny, it's like, you know what, that's way better than the robot we had our first year. Uh, it's a very impressive robot, um, and then it was fun to watch these kids go out and interact with other kids, they had no clue who they were, and make connections, um, we were able to get, um, a couple contacts from other teams to say, hey, if you ever need help, hey, we're willing to help you. And that's part of the first idea, is to actually go out and help other teams too, um, but, um, they were very helpful, um, and, sort of very encouraging for our kids too.
That's great, so did the Fishbowl, you have special shirts to wear?
Uh, yes, we did, we actually, the Fishbowl did make some shirts, um, that Camilla actually designed, um, she drew up, um, uh, Blue Jay and some wrenches, and it was able to skin him in and actually put it on the shirt. And so it was actually her design that we actually were able to wear.
I think I did see them, actually.
Yeah, so, um, we did have special shirts that, um, we did have for them, um, so we matched. I don't think the next competition, we're going to go a little crazy like some of the other teams, they get a little more creative, I don't know. Uh, some of the kids, you know, had new costumes, uh, weird hats and stuff like that, so it's a good, it's, it's kind of like a party atmosphere, um, maybe I can get them to come out of the show, it'll be something crazy, I don't know. Yeah, it's, it, you know, it's, it, it was, it was a, a fun experiment, um, and like I said, I, I'm going out and actively seeking sponsors so we guys can continue this, um, so the school doesn't have to keep incurring the, the cost, and so hopefully, um, we can get some sponsors.
I do want to say on behalf of the board and all that, I appreciate you guys coming to the board and presenting that, it's great, I love it when we can, uh, show off some of the new things we're doing, you know, academically especially, so, Mr. Moore, it seems like we're always inviting you, but thanks for coming.
It's all right.
Thank you very much, uh, keep plugging away.
Oh, there they are.
Good luck.
All right, yep.
I'll have to send you a video, I have a really good video of you guys competing, putting the blocks in, so, yeah.
Oh, yeah, uh, yeah, we have, we'll have a couple pictures, um, eventually make, make up on a website, um, eventually, um, as we go on, uh, we'll create a, a sort of a Twitter page, um, a lot of other teams have that and stuff.
I think we can put that, if you sent it to me, we could put it on the website, actually, too.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, I have them in action, so...
Yeah, okay, good, you can put a link, or you can put it on the website.
It's cool.
All right.
Hey, thank you very much, yeah, thanks for, Harrison brought you guys, too, appreciate it.
Is that a
I'll just move to super tennis report?
I have a question.
Yes.
Is he volunteering for robotics, or is that a supplemental contract?
No, I can mark it down, we got, no, it's right now, volunteer.
Okay, you probably need to discuss that.
Spent his whole day there.
Yeah, I gotta mark that.
Okay, good, thank you, good to know.
On my part, we got Christmas break, uh, kids are off tomorrow, we do have a waiver day tomorrow with, with staff here, so kids start their break tomorrow, uh, and the twenty, or the second is the last day, so we actually come back on the third, I know some people go back on the second, but we come back on the third. Waiver day is tomorrow, uh, we have a whole day kind of planned, uh, the state wants us to do AED training, so we have that first thing in the morning, and then we're breaking off with the county, uh, Darlene has stuff for the drivers and everybody, every department has some stuff going on, but, uh, the certified staff's busy all day with, uh, content stuff with the county, so breaking into different groups, it's here all day for, uh, that type of training. We do have, uh, coffee and donuts at eight, we have, uh, lunch at eleven-thirty, and the staff got their T-shirts, so I just wanted to kind of show you what the Fishbowl made for the staff, uh, shirts like that, and actually the staff part is a reflective type, so, like when you see, like on jogging pants, you know, light gets it, so it's pretty neat. So they were passed out, we might have like a little blue out tomorrow in the cafeteria, like, uh, game day, so, uh, that, so, um, tomorrow's going to be a busy day, Martin Luther King Day is the fifteenth, so there's no classes, uh, Blue Jay Elf, you know, that was, uh, donations through organizations and people, and they take care of, uh, I'll have the more detail probably at the retreat for you, but, uh, that took place a week ago, and I, I want to say they helped like sixty some families, but I'll have to get the breakdown on that, so... All county board meeting is, is on January thirty-first, it's at the Career Center, uh, we could probably talk about more of the retreat, I guess, um, I don't think typically we haven't been attending, so you guys can think about it.
I went last year to there.
So last year, a couple years ago?
Two years ago.
Yeah. So, um, I guess that's a date, think about it, talk about it on the retreat. PTA is actually providing, uh, those thirty-five-hundred dollars they gave us to allocate for, uh, new handles on the elementary school, the ones that, uh, lock when they shut it, and so it makes it easier, um, for security-type reasons, that they're, they're making recommendations for security, so PTA kind of, our officer, uh, Bill Sluznowski, approached PTA at one of their meetings, uh, last, two weeks ago on, uh, I don't know if it was Monday night, I think, but, uh, he presented them the program, they kind of voted right away to give it to them, so, uh, and they're actually putting them in over break, uh, Mr. Snowden and custodians are putting them in already, so... Miccolina Terranova, uh, reached her thousand doll, or thousand basketball career points about, oh, maybe it was two weeks ago now, but, uh, that's the third girl in two years that reached that, so, uh, congratulations to her, and, uh, the girls' team's off to a pretty good start, I believe they're seven-and-oh right now, and I believe they're at Benalridge tonight, is that right, Tom?
Yep.
Yeah, so, uh, uh, December e-blast, did everybody get that from the board? I think it's in your packet, but, uh, the e-blast, just so everybody's aware, it's here, you can sign, if you're not getting them, it's an electronic message that goes out every month, and for some reason you're not getting them, or you know anybody that's not getting them, uh, you can go onto our main website, and there's a place to log in and put your message, so, uh, try to cover some information, uh, that's helpful, so hopefully everybody's getting that. After-school care, uh, the survey went out on Monday, and I will be getting the results tomorrow, uh, from Mrs. Smith, flexing them today, and we'll see if we can start something up in probably mid-January. A meeting on January ninth, if that's the Tuesday, with, I think we had seven teachers sign up that, that would want to do it, so a meeting with them on the ninth to go over how many people signed up and everything, and, and work out some details about how, remember, they would have to pay for the after-school care, so, um, so we'll know more on, uh, well, we'll know more tomorrow, know more tomorrow if we can go ahead and do it, if there's enough people with interest, but, um, on the ninth, I'm meeting with the people that signed up for it, to make sure we're moving ahead with it, so I would think we could start it, uh, well, we might be able to start it like, you know, after Martin Luther King Weekend or something, so we'll see.
So you'll know the cost, once you see how many people are interested, and figure out how much it's going to cost us to
Yeah, and sometimes people sign it and then don't use it, but, uh, I mean, we're not in it to make money on the project, it's really just to break even, even if we actually lose a little, little bit, I mean, it's fine, but the main goal is just to kind of break even, so, and before school is being utilized quite a bit, I mean, there's anywhere from fifteen to thirty kids in there in the morning, so...
I can imagine.
Yeah, that's working out well, actually, so, uh, it's one of those things you start, and you have to look at and revamp a little bit, so, uh, Mrs. Guinness was doing it one day, and she was on the freeway, and, uh, a part fell off a car in front of her and hit her car, but she couldn't, she couldn't stop, because no one would have been here for the kids, so, uh, and it's at six, you know, it's early, so, seven, uh, so we had to work out some details, so, um, just one of those things you work on, you know, but, uh, before school's going well, we'll probably start the after-schools, although we got enough people in, uh, you know, mid-January or so. Arts, I didn't quite get everything I needed to show you, so, uh, Mrs. Mandalora, or Mrs. Mandalora has been doing quite a bit with art, and, uh, probably doing it to retreat, she was going to give me pictures and stuff to show, but I didn't quite get them yet, so, but I know she was busy today, uh...
Salvation Army.
Okay, I know she went with some kids to Salvation Army, uh, to do some stuff, uh, for the holidays and that, so, um, everybody's just kind of busy right now and stuff, so as soon as I can get those, I'll present them, uh, at the January board meeting probably for you. Boys JV and Varsity Holiday Basketball Tournament is next week, it's our first one, it's on the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, I believe we have Jackson Milton, uh, Columbiana, Marlington, I'm drawing a blank on the fourteen, uh, but anyhow, they made, uh, here we go, uh, make the win. So, uh, our Fishbowl made shirts for each one of the kids, get a shirt, and the sponsors, so Spitzer kind of gave us, uh, money to, uh, sponsor the Varsity, uh, and Burger King for the JV, so they put each team's logo on the back.
That's nice.
That's fun.
So, uh, and the kids made all these shirts, and, uh, we have a trophy with the car on it, uh, for the champs.
Oh, that's what that was for.
Actually, everybody probably think I was sitting up here at my lunch, this is the Burger King trophy, and it's, uh, really cool, you can touch it, it's, kind of looks real, so, uh...
That's fun.
It's our first annual, uh, holiday tournament, so, uh, there's that, and then the kids get the plaques too, just so they know, so, one with Spitzer's on it, and, uh, one with Burger King on it, so...
That's cool.
Really nice, Mr. Ho, you know, has put in plenty of time on this, just to kind of let you know that, uh, worked real hard getting that all organized, so the tournament's really, like, it's not like we're putting out any money for it, it's all sponsored, which is nice, so, uh, good deal, and I just wanted to show, we'll be hanging this up, we finally got, uh, I finally got the, the plow with the kids and everything, and eight-by-twelve picture framed and everything, so, you guys see it, all right, go there.
It's nice.
So put that up, uh, and then what I got here, uh, I got it starting at three o'clock, I don't know what that's for. Oh, okay, the games, but, uh, the kids approached me, uh, probably three weeks ago about starting, uh, like little intermural ping-pong games, uh, so what we did was, uh, Mr. Smith, uh, from the high school science department is going to watch them after school, they're going to get teams, or see who wants to be in it, and make brackets, and they're going to start that after school. I actually got a ping-pong table at home that, um, I'm, we're going to have, brought out here, and they're going to use my table, and, uh, just folds up, so put it in the cafeteria, so they're going to do that, uh, one day a week after school, uh, starting in January, so...
Cool.
Just for fun, so, uh, if they can make it, they make it, uh, like kids that want to be in it, and something comes up, whether they have practice or a game, it just, they'll just pass, it's just, just for fun, so, um, but, you know, a couple, I think there's four or five kids approached me, so we tried to figure out how we can do it, so, uh, that's it, I think, for my part. You and Nate, are you ready for the ping-pong? No, I, I'm not good, I told them no. I'm big, glad to have my table brought out, but I'm not going to be in it. I have just a couple things, um, on page five, the, uh, Nick, the organizational meeting is on the, uh, January sixth, are you, are you okay with that, everybody? Okay, and then we'll hold there, we're actually going to have two board meetings, we'll have the organizational, then we adjourn, and then we start the regular board meeting, so for the month. Okay, and, um, also, you received my email about the lift we sold, is everybody okay with that, it's on the agenda, Dave did a real good job doing some negotiation with the company, we'll get the new lift, so it's going to be a wash after we sell that lift and buy the new lift for sixty-five-hundred dollars. We had a real big scissor lift, it's just too big for the school, so we sold it, and we're buying a used one for the same cost as selling it, so it's just a small, real good, uh, so... The, um, state auditors have been in for the last month, everything's going well with that, um, they'll be here for another couple weeks, I think they told me, and then they'll leave for another school, and so far, everything's going real well. I live in half the office, it's running good right now. That's all I have.
That's all I have.
Pleasure, Slade, over.
Sure. Somebody give some updates regarding some House bills that would be considered, try to be brief. House Bill two hundred is a situation that creates an Ohio Opportunity Scholarship voucher program, this is a new statewide program allowing K-12 students to use a voucher to attend private schools. What this does is the bill expands vouchers to students in all school districts regardless of the academic report card rating of their school building or district, and the only qualifier for eligibility is household income. So students whose family income is at or below eighty-hundred percent of the federal poverty level, roughly seventy-three thousand, eight hundred for family of four, would qualify for a five thousand voucher. So the end result is the legislation would directly fund the vouchers from the state instead of being deducted from the resident school district. And this is gonna drain, this would drain resources that we best use for public schools, which we are a part of, so that is being considered, it's House Bill two hundred. House Bill four eighteen requires a public or chartered non-public school to transmit a student's record within five business days when the student transfers to a school, I don't know what it is now, but that's, must be a change. And also, House Bill four twenty-six, if it's an employee of a school or institution of higher education, okay. I should have read that earlier. Regarding student religious expression and to the entitlement of the Act of Ohio Student Religious Liberties is House Bill four twenty-eight. And lastly, House Bill four twenty, excuse me, two twenty-six being considered, provides for a permanent three-day sales tax holiday each August during which sales of clothing and school supplies are exempt from taxes.
That one, Mr. Micholi, there is no time limit on it right now, so they're making it five days.
Tightening it up.
Yeah, I guess.
Tom.
Hi.
I thought that two-two-six, we were doing that every year anyway.
I think they just do it about one weekend, or one day? I think it's just one day.
It's one day or a weekend.
I thought it was Pennsylvania.
I thought it was a weekend.
I thought it was two days.
I think it's two days.
Okay.
All right, roundtable discussion, Mr. Micholi?
Sure. So I spoke with Mr. McGee today, he's gonna attend next January's meeting to talk about the basketball court of the old high school, the proposal, with some input from the Citizen Association and the North Jackson Business Association, so he'll be here in January, wants to give us the highlights of that, and also, we were discussing the initial build of the school, and the percentage we were supposed to get from the state, and he mentioned, why have we not pursued that legally? Why not take, it's been ten years, it was supposed to come our way, isn't that something that we could consider going after?
First, I've sent three, three letters and personally talked to the person down there.
We made a visit one time, two years ago.
Mitch, we are on the radar, we're just not at the point where we qualify for funding.
Oh, absolutely, and the whole point of being legally involved, taking it to a different level, to rise and look, so.
We talked to Shavani, and he's asking more about the legality of pursuing something, we could talk about it, I mean.
I will call House School Boards for you, how about that? I will call House School.
It was just today that I talked to him, and he mentioned, I said, you know.
Yeah, 'cause the seventeen percent is supposed to be around two-point-seven million, if I remember correctly.
Correct, so the best five thousand dollars to try to get that might not be the worst idea.
I will look into that.
Spoke with Mr. Gary Hemphill, representing the Citizen Association, he asked if we could consider an easement legally for access to the sign at the old high school, in the event that we would sell the property, they'd still have access to that sign, so I told him I would mention that. So they want to be able to get to it no matter what.
Two things, I will look into that. Originally, they talked about just being, they would be allowed to take it, you know, I don't know about an easement, 'cause that might make it harder to like sell something, like if you ever want to sell the property, I mean, originally, we talked about that they would just be allowed to take it, like a write-up, like an agreement, that they would be allowed to just make sure that it was dismantled, taken.
So there's a guarantee that the sign stays, obviously.
You're talking about the electronic sign they want to purchase and put in there?
Yes.
When that happens.
And there used to be electricity or a light on that sign, and there appears to not be one now. No, I understand exactly what he's speaking of, but I'm just saying, is there no, did something happen?
The school.
'Cause it used to have, no, even though, since the school has been gone, it was lit in the past, but it isn't lit anymore.
I beg you to remember that.
Well, they want to, they would run their own locks, so they're built for separately and everything.
No, I understand, I just thought something changed, like, I don't know why it changed, why it wasn't lit.
If you sell the property, then we're...
Oh, he wasn't worried about getting the sign, he was worried about just, not worried, wanted to know if we could make it, so if the signs stays there, an easement would be...
And that's kind of difficult, yeah, I understand why he would do that, but I don't know that we could do that at this time.
You have to just make sure that they would have the right to take it down and take it.
We want to just make sure, keep her on our radar.
Right.
And I don't, for the public, all five of you, I don't see selling that, I'm wrong in the near future, for sure.
Correct. Talking for organizational meeting.
That's all I have.
Do we have for the retreat, discussion with the lights down?
Yeah, Mr. Hoag's actually, I got him on there to come in at one, 'cause he's, in the morning is kind of tough, he's gonna be with that tournament.
Is there be on the retreat, discussion for the building?
Again, I'd be with Mr. Hoag, though.
And do we have all the organizations coming to the retreat that they involve?
No, not really, right now, I have, I have Ohio School Boards coming.
I mean, we've had them come in the past, talking about...
We have, I was gonna change it up a little bit, to be honest with you, just to make it a little more beneficial, I think, 'cause they can come during the year too.
I just being honest, to see what progress they're making, they're hurting people, I know they, I met with one of them, handed him all my files on Jump Drive the other day, with everyone over.
Oh, you're talking about boosters and stuff?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. They usually come in August though, don't they?
They come at the beginning.
They come at... It's organizational also.
In the past, we've had a retreat.
Okay, I don't, I haven't talked to anybody like that about it.
Mr. Jones, what was the building that you were talking about?
The...
Like a wellness type center, an ex-surface building for like a weight room and a gym.
I'm good. Tom. How did John send the emails to us, but yeah, I'd like to thank you for the donation to the program, and there's someone else, and all the... I think they're in front somewhere. Yeah. Just wanted to thank the donations.
Thanks, Michelle.
All the band boosters. That's all I had.
Just curious, I have a few things, but I was just curious, why are we asking the Ohio School Board Association to come? What was your thought?
Just to explain policies and everything, how they work.
Is there a certain particular thing that you think we need to be educated on?
We're members, just how we all work.
No, I mean, you can call them anytime, I mean, that's our, right as a board member, so I'm just curious as to why they would be on our agenda, that's all.
Just to come up, make sure we're all doing like what we're supposed to be doing, I guess, basically. Me, I'm supposed to be presenting stuff to you and the public, and your role and my role and all that, like a refresher, I think.
Todd and I are fairly new, and Nick's come on.
I think we ever went over it.
I have Monsebe dial, so I was just curious, that's why they weren't on our agenda, that's all.
No, they do presentations, they do, they said they actually do all days, but I didn't want it all day, so they're gonna break it down.
Okay, sounds great. We had mentioned the robotics club, which I think is fabulous, I think it's great, I think a lot of people in our community don't realize that we do have other clubs that are non-sports related. I like that you mentioned the ping pong, I think that's fun for those non-athletic kids. There's also one that my daughter's in, which I thought to be very interesting, it's a board game club. So I kind of think that all of those clubs are kind of along the same lines of each other, which I'm excited that we have those other opportunities for students that, you know, have those varied interests. So if there's any way to support the teachers that are sponsoring those clubs, even a board game club is going to require extra time, so if there's some way that we could stipend them in some way that would be beneficial to them, I would be encouraged to look at that for those particular teachers, so if we could think about that. Quizbowl, I know you mentioned that you were running that at the elementary, has that ended, or are we, I can't?
Sixth and fifth has ended.
Okay.
Fourth is gonna pick their teams up when we come back, and then we talked about doing it in third, but we also talked about, Ryan and I have talked about how to do a, like, I don't know, it'd be like a Nintendo-type tournament, like where they play a game?
Yeah, games.
For recess.
And you guys have kind of liked upped it a little bit, I see you have a fancy cloth over there now, and yeah, it's kind of, I mean, the kids, believe it or not, that little stuff, the kids literally, they talk about that, the little things are exciting for them, so I think that's great that you take your time to go and do that at the elementary level, I do, I think that's great.
You feel bad, because it was all meant to be fun and everything, and then when the one team lost, they were crying, and it wasn't meant to be.
They get into it.
They do, all of mine, it's like country.
Yeah.
They worry more about what they're gonna name their team than anything, but, but I mean, it went down to like overtime and stuff, and I felt bad.
That's nice, though, I think that's a nice opportunity.
I love it, and all the kids turn around and watch it, and...
Yeah, great.
Yeah, no, we gotta do fourth, and I think we're gonna do it in third.
Well, good, I think the kids really enjoy it.
You know, Mr. Rettuno gets a plaque, I mean, they get their name on a plaque.
Yeah. It's nice.
Like you were talking about, another great club that we do, and it's at the elementary, is Coder Club, though.
Oh, yeah, Mr. Rettuno does that, yes.
It's a great academic type club.
Do we have those listed on the website? I don't know.
I don't know.
I don't, I don't know that all of those, like unless you have a child, you wouldn't know that we have all those different things.
Once we talk about it.
Yeah, 'cause we have a science club, we got math club.
Spanish club, I mean, there's just, it's just a lot.
Well, the Coder Club was on the...
It's on our e-blast, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know if it's on the website, though, but Ryan and I had, we made sure we put that in the e-blast.
I also wanted to mention the North Jackson Citizens Association did a nice tree lighting ceremony that we had some members of our band perform at, and they, it sounded really nice, it was a very small group, but it was in the gazebo, so it was, it was very nice, and the kids that were in attendance did a nice job, Mr. Kittle was there, I bet there were close to maybe a hundred or so people in the community that came that day, so it was, it was well done, and we, I think our school was well, you know, promoted there also.
And they did send a thank you from the school to be there, Mrs. Sudamak.
Oh, that's Sudamak, yeah, oh, that's nice. I think that was all.
I think Mrs. Persuti was, Mrs. Persuti was there too, I think, right?
Yeah, I believe she was, yeah, and there were some nice, nice kids, and they had, you know, little beverages and things, so it was nice.
That's like, just to go, even the concert, we had the first and second grade concert here, it was standing room only, I don't know if anybody, I mean, it was packed, they had, the seats were like all the way back, and it was standing room only, the kids just did a great job, and I know that day, we were struggling with whether to cancel or not, because I think the schools around us canceled, there was, there were some athletic events canceled, so I know I met with Mr. Hoag and Mrs. Tullin, 'cause we had athletic games that night too, but we decided to let it go, which I guess now is a good decision, but you never know.
Yeah.
Especially when other ones are canceling, it makes you wonder, but the weather hit right after, though, because the next day we're off. But if we didn't get the concert in at night is what we're worried about, we wouldn't have it at night again, the way the schedules matched up, so that's why we kind of, like, we didn't have that.
It's kind of hit and miss with attendance, though, with our parents, and I wish there was a way for us to figure out, for example, we had a spelling bee even just today.
Yeah.
There were two families represented at that spelling bee, and I was one of the families, and there's another family right here. Why you wouldn't go see your child in a spelling bee, I'm just dumbfounded at. Girls' basketball, they're awesome, our girls' basketball team is awesome. One high school boy was at the last away game, and that was my son that I brought, I was just like, are you kidding me? Where are the boyfriends to these beautiful girls? They don't even come to the games? And the parents? Well, yes, I agree. But the parents don't come to watch their children, so sometimes it's hit and miss, like I'm so glad that they're coming to the concert when they're little, and, but, and I think Mr. Hoag is doing a fine job getting the younger kids coming to the high school games. I know Jack is excited, he's in sixth grade, and he gets to play even at a halftime JV game, he thinks that's awesome, as a sixth grader, getting to go to that court and play. But something's gotta happen for our girls when they're, and when I say they're awesome, I mean, they're awesome.
They're number one.
They're awesome, with no effort, like...
I know at home games, they get a better crowd, though, but I don't...
Yeah, it's just, I don't know how to...
They've just got everything going on, you know, Christmas shopping.
I know, and we're small, I get that, it's just sad that the very parents of the children playing aren't even there.
There's no words for that.
There's no words.
I know, at the home games, it was pretty crowded.
So, but that's all I have.
They typically are on their away games, Louisville, Kane was definitely...
It was rough, yeah.
There wasn't very many people.
And it wasn't a bad weather?
Even on their side, there wasn't many people.
You're right, you're right.
It was just, yeah, kind of had to do.
So, but thank you.
The elementary spelling bee had a lot of parents there.
Oh, did they? Good.
That was the day before, I believe. Yours was, the elementary was the day before, I believe.
Well, good, that's good to hear.
One thing that the government wants, that though, like working parents, I mean, you don't always know people's schedule, you know, sometimes you can't bug out to be there at a spelling bee even when you really, really want to be, and not everybody works day shifts, so you never know, some of the parents of the kids playing the evening games.
That's true.
It might not be, well, it's a choice, but might be a choice that's...
They can't help.
You know, mandated by finance.
Michelle, that's a good point, I didn't mean to, when she said nobody, I'm like, hardly anybody.
It's...
No, I know what you're saying, but I just mean, there's so many factors with that that you don't always know, I've missed a lot of stuff, because I've been working, it's not because I don't care.
They think like other parents are in it, maybe, I don't know.
That's true, too.
My daughter's getting the night.
You're a bad parent.
So I just had two quick things, just a question, first of all, was there any hiccups with before school and the snow day, like, did that affect anyone? I think it was called off early enough that it probably would have worked out, but you didn't have any parents who, like, were on their way to work, and, no?
No, I mean, I, we put in a letter, though, that at six o'clock is when we took the call.
Okay, you did put that in, okay, 'cause I was just saying, that's something to be respectful of the parents, like, I know there were many times years ago when my kid was in elementary that I would be like dropping him off somewhere, and then I would get that call, and I'd think, oh, and then it would be a two-hour delay, and then it would turn around, and it would be a day off, like, that instills panic in working parents, so just something to keep in mind, but the six o'clock call was nice.
We put in a letter, too, if there is a two-hour delay, that there is no, you know, before school.
Yeah.
Like even, did the time change?
I guess I'm just saying, you know, it was fine at the time, just always remember, like, not to do it probably after six o'clock, 'cause you could very well put somebody in a bind where they don't know what to do for that day, so. And then my last thing is just to comment on the survey, again, I know the surveys, you said, aren't all in yet, that we did?
For this week?
No, 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 the surveys that went out to the parents.
Oh, yeah, that's, yeah, they were, I mean, the cutoff was...
Yeah, did, was there a decent response, or?
Thirty-five, I want to say, no, I'm sorry, forty-one.
That's better, and I know...
Yeah, that is more.
Yeah, and I know, I saw your post, like, putting it out there, but just with people here, like, spread the word, because there was a lot of work from the board to get that initiative, and I can honestly say, after being here for four years, that really administration does care, and that is a great, great way to get your, you know, opinion voiced in a very...
Yeah, I think it was forty-one, and it was twenty, it was really, it was twenty from the high school and twenty-one from the elementary school. the high school and twenty-one from the elementary school.
Because I really think that data will be used to improve things, and sometimes you just don't think of anything, like what we just said, you know, like you see it one way, but you work in, you know, education, whereas I work in healthcare, which, you know, I've worked a million shifts and stuff, you just, different paradigms, so it's true.
We've already, principals and I have already went over it, looked at it, reviewed it, and each building has theirs to look at and, uh.
Good.
And there's some nice pieces in there about curriculum and stuff.
I was going to say, was it constructed, did it help?
Yeah, I think there was only one that just kind of did the same answer, and you could tell it was just they did it to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, most of them are pretty good, like I said, we've got some good feedback on the stuff, it's, uh, like the one on communication was kind of hard though, because some people wanted less communication, some people wanted more, some people said, like, we don't try to communicate, which we communicate, I think more here from this school than than any school that I know of.
And the teachers' reception to the survey, like, did they get to read?
We didn't share with them.
You did not share with the teachers, okay.
Breaking it down and stuff, we'll present it on a way per day, or.
Okay.
Teachers may.
All right, I was just curious.
Yeah, no, we didn't give them like all the pieces of it.
Okay, that's all I had. So, public discussion?
I have, I have two points, one was actually the survey. Um, I guess are the survey, not the exact results, I don't feel need to be released to the public, but what can be released to the public to let them know by them taking their time that you are listening and then this is what's being done? That in itself will increase a buy-in and a support. You know, if you do a survey and then never hear anything, you're never going to do a survey again, so I guess.
I agree.
From your perspective, like how will those people know that something is being done about their?
I can put it in eBlast or something, let them know that we've, you know, that we've met and all that stuff about it.
That's Jamie Campbell, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yes, sir.
Would you mind introducing yourself and telling us about your, you know?
I'm Jamie Campbell. Do I have to say you do?
No, that, that just makes it easier for everyone to know, because they're asking.
Um, and then teachers, if it's related to the teachers, they will somehow get that information from the, from the, from the surveys? Okay. Because that would be, I mean, I've had people ask me, and, and again, because you guys wanted it promoted so well at the last board meeting, I tried to help promote that on social media, so I've had people ask me, hey, what, you know, what happened with that? And so just from experience, if, if they never hear anything, there's no real reason to ever do one again, so I would, I would recommend getting something out there, saying, hey, your voices are being heard and.
That's a good point.
You know what I mean?
What was the plan for the utility of it, once we got the information back, what was the follow-up on? Well, originally, it's just like the surveys, that's the concern, like when you want teacher surveys and stuff, it's supposed to be just for administration to take and, and work on. And it wasn't meant to be released and all that.
So we'll be creative and, and communicate that we got them and appreciate.
Well, Lisa, thank you, we got.
Right.
A greater response this time.
We got X number back.
Administration is currently reviewing the results and, and communicating with teachers.
Yeah.
You know, that kind of stuff, I think it's that follow-through that I think will increase just more of a community buy-in and support of the school system.
Do you feel like you're going to do it again, or every report card, do it again, like keep it consistent, or just do it like once a year, twice a year, is that something that you guys?
I think we're all planning on doing it once a year.
Once a year?
Once a year.
I wasn't going to have a great period though.
Okay.
You had a point, or no?
I, I, um, this one's a little difficult for me, and I, um, I first want to congratulate the, uh, Jackson Milton's girls' basketball program. I'm not from Jackson Milton, my, my husband's family, I mean, Campbells have been here for a while, not me personally, but in recent years, I've seen the, um, girls' basketball program be the shining light really of, of Jackson Milton, you know, going to districts, regionals. So now, um, we're in the junior high girls' program, and, um, I just, there's a great, um, when you have a number one program in state, you want to see that that program is being invested in at the lower grades. Um, and I can tell you, and, and this is something you guys can discuss, I have went through and talked to the athletic directors and the coaches, but our girls' seventh grade team has five members, um, some of them are injured, playing with absolutely no breaks, um, we have shin splints, we have strained necks, they're getting beat by thirty, forty, fifty points a game, um, given it they're all, mind you, a suggestion, a suggestion has been brought, um, there's four to five eighth grade girls, um, there's a, there's a surplus of eighth grade girls that are legally allowed to play, um, down, and they're currently, um, not playing at all for eighth grade, and when asked, could you help out the seventh grade, they're refusing. So like last night, uh, for example, we had injured girls, no subs, and, you know, just awful, so. That being said, I know that in the volleyball program with the surplus of eighth graders, they were asked to play down in seventh grade, they gained valuable experience, et cetera, so.
They got to play?
They got to play, um, they did it, so I'm, I'm kind of wondering why that is not being utilized, actually, this is becoming a safety issue for our seventh grade girls. Um, and I, I just would like to know, why can't the eighth grader support girls' basketball like it, it was in volleyball? And so I, I think, you know, again, you look at a program that is so great, a shining light of a school, and you wonder, you know, it's basically going to crumble, it is crumbling at that junior high level, so if it continues, there will be no kids to play JV and varsity. Because, I mean, when you beat forty, fifty points a game and you're injured and you're playing, that, it becomes a problem. So I know this has been addressed maybe with some of you, um, I know the athletic directors have been talking about it, I, I have talked to the coaches, I mean, I'm the kind of person, I, I don't go to a board without, you know, trying to figure out what's going on, and so I don't exactly know what's happening, other than, you know, there's, there's a refusal on the part of the eighth graders, eighth graders that do not play, to step up to help build the program, so. A te-, a team, and it's, it's quite sad, and, um, I, I believe I've heard if they, they said, if you make me, I will quit, you know, I'll just quit, and so there's that fear, I think, that, well, they're going to quit. So anyways, um, it's, it is becoming a bit of a, I would say, safety issue. Now, our girls are getting a two-week break here from games, which is good, heal some strained necks, hopefully heal some shin splints, hopefully heal some banged up hands and fingers.
They're getting ready to have one move.
Yeah, we're also having one move, it's going to leave us with four, so as a, as a board and as a, you know, I kind of want to know, like, what is the plan? Do we just wait till there's only three left and then we don't have a seventh grade program? You know, I, I would like some discussion of how can we, um, continue to build the most successful program we have going in the state, I mean, in our school system, you know what I mean? So, that's it. I, I don't expect discussion right here, but it's, I mean, we have parents threatening to boycott, um, it, it could get ugly really, really fast, um, and, and I just think, with the, again, the number one program in the state, in Division Four, number fifteen overall, something has to be done to keep this program going and to keep our girls safe.
What are they going to boycott on?
Practices, games.
The seventh graders?
Seventh grade, eighth grade.
My daughter's also on the same team, so my daughter texted me today at four o'clock and said, Mom, can you please come pick us up? We'll go and practice in the Campbell's Gym, that way we don't have to be made fun of and look to be stupid. And she came home from practice and just was bawling her eyes out. And my daughter's very strong, she doesn't cry, she's not a crier, so it's just a very bad environment right now.
It's, it's becoming a toxic culture?
They love, they, all of the girls love sports, they're athletic, they play every sport that they can, and it's just taking their character and smashing it in the ground.
I want to, I want to understand this better, so please say that again, what your daughter said, I didn't understand the reasoning why she said.
So she wants to practice, she wants to keep on engaging and, and playing and making, and being better and learning, but she doesn't feel that she can learn in that environment whenever the other girls are constantly putting them down and laughing, if they go to, you know, make a shot, they're laughed at and teased, and that type of environment is very hard to learn and grow. So they were, so what they were going to do was go into a different environment where just the five of them could go and not be made fun of and practice on their own.
Yeah, two layers.
Yeah, that is, it very much is two layers.
It is, it is.
It's actually three.
Thankfully, my daughter's not hurt yet, she's one of the ones that doesn't have the injuries, but.
I know, I'll discuss it. I'll learn more about it now.
I don't have a child in the elementary, minor or high school, I've seen that these girls play, I've gone to, we go to a lot, my husband and I go to a lot of the different games. That element, that group, both groups, the eighth grade and the seventh grade, they're amazing girls, and they're doing amazing things. But the five girls that they're talking about, the seventh grade, they are, they're doing it, it's ju, it's, it's a struggle to watch.
Well, I.
I would tell you as a school board member and as a, as a parent that's already went through that, um, that one, I think we have a great hot stove program that took, is, uh, starting our kids out younger, to hopefully kind of eliminate some of that, because it's tough when you have four and five, if you have five girls, they're all playing. My daughter in seventh grade had.
No, they're still eighth graders.
My daughter had, my daughter had seven, was in seventh grade and had, I think, six, so, I mean, we had maybe one that would come down and play as, you know, as an eighth grader. So I think one, our, with our school and our hot stove program that, to continue to build that helps, um, I think obviously we need to probably bring that to the attention of, of the coach and the A.D. and see what we can do there, but it is tough.
I think that last year, we had twelve in our hot stove, for our grade twelve.
I know that our high school coaches went down there and helped, and, and took some of the varsity girls down, they helped that whole, all of them grow.
Which was actually very wonderful, and what happened, what they need though is.
Once their season starts, I think it's more difficult to do, but I know that we have done some things and invested in the seventh and eighth grade program, but when you only have, when you have the numbers, I mean, my daughters, how many girls are in freshman class?
Thirteen or fourteen in the whole grade.
So not even talking about sports, there's only thirteen in the whole grade, his, his daughter's one of them too. So, I mean, it's tough, but I'm not, I'm not trying to make excuses, I'm saying, I think, I think it's definitely worth, as far as I'm concerned, looking into it and seeing if we can get some of them eighth graders to come down and play, because I had the same